Seven o'clock. You all set?
Yep.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the West Bridgewater Board of Selectment meeting. Today is October 4th, 2017. For those of you viewing from home, thank you for tuning in. If at everyone make sure that their phone is on silent or turned off and please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening for everyone here tonight. First item on the agenda is Throwback Burger Common Vic License. David?
Yep, so Mallory is here and she's going to go over, as you know, that there is a, an application for you for the Common Vic down at the Dunkin' Donuts Plaza in the center of town.
Lot of scuttlebutt and excitement about this new business in town, so it's exciting to be here and let everyone know what's going on. It's Mallory.
So this is Amantino Loebz and he's opening up Throwback Burgers in the North Main Street Plaza there, kind of next to the, his lot, his space is next to the dry cleaners. So everything's in order as far as his paperwork and the building department has signed off. I know there are a handful of permits or maybe just a couple that need to be signed off and then to get his occupancy, but that doesn't slow anything up on our end. I will just say my only concern is the parking. He did supply a engineered plan that gave him, I want to say, seven spots, so it's signed and stamped by an engineer. I just think practically parking may be troublesome.
There are other vacancies in that building right now, so that should assist, assist with that. I guess your, your busy time is going to be the opposite of Dunkin' Donuts. I know they're busy all day, but obviously in the mornings they're busiest times, so you should complement each other pretty well.
Yeah, and half of our business is a takeout, so they're going to be in and out anyways.
Well, why don't we give you the floor? One, I know a lot of people know about your business and if you're, you're on television, if you don't know, and believe it or not, a lot of people watch, so why don't you tell us a little bit about what you will be doing there and a little bit about your business?
Well, it's basically, it's a hamburger place. We cook all of our food to order. Nothing is pre-cooked. We, in addition to just burgers, we have hot dogs, we're going to have salads, chicken. So it's more diverse than just, if you look at a Five Guys, we have a lot more stuff. We also have milkshakes, we will have some sub sandwiches with cold cuts, but very limited to it. So basically that's the, we're not going to be selling any alcohol, it's just soda and milkshakes.
Okay. And everything's in order with the Board of Health?
Yes.
Okay. David?
Yeah, just a quick question. Based on the menu that you just, that you just provided, why is it that you're looking for 7:00 AM open time?
We have a breakfast.
So you are going to have breakfast as well in addition to what you just discussed?
It's going to be somewhere around 8:00 in the morning that we're going to open up. We're looking for 7, but most likely it'll be 8, depending on the employees.
I just want to make sure the Board is aware that it's, it will be open that early.
The Board members have any questions?
No.
Oh, I was talking to him for quite a while here. You've got another place in stone, you said?
Yes.
So, yeah, I think I should add to that plaza down there, and just another place that David tend, go down to eat, right David?
He does love his burgers.
Yeah, that's true. He loves to eat, I don't mind.
Do you have a tentative grand opening date?
We're looking for within the next two weeks.
If you would just let the office know, we'd love to be there for you.
Yeah, the only thing that's missing is hooking up the hood and every time they go there, it starts to pour and they have to cut the roof.
All right. All right, do I have a motion?
No.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Very good, congratulations and thank you for choosing new businesses in West Bridgewater. We're happy to have you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, warrant Board of Selectmen business. Appoint Anthony Kinnahan to union negotiations for the Department of Public Works. We had asked this initially during the initial discussions, so we're just ratifying that through the, through our discussions at a prior meeting. Have a motion?
Motion to appoint Anthony Kinnahan.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Appoint Paula Bunker to the Mobile Home Rent Control Board. I had a discussion with David earlier today. We're going to take this off the agenda for now, just waiting for some feedback, or do we get further feedback?
We did. So hot off the press. We have received town council review. He has determined there would be a conflict between her appointment as a Board of Assessor and also on this, so he is advising the Board, do not appoint her. I've already spoken to her and she is aware.
Okay. We just let her know, we thank her for her willingness to serve. I know we, we reached out on Facebook and whatnot to get some people involved and Paula responded. Unfortunately, this one's not going to work for her, but we do appreciate her stepping up. Review place, warrant articles for special town meeting. David?
Yep, so you'll see on page 13 of your packet, we have eight proposed warrant articles. So if, if the chair is, is okay, what I'll do is I'll go through them one by one.
Please.
Article one is a carryover from last town meeting, which is from the Director of Public Works, or the Highway Department as it was, is to purchase two large vehicles for plowing. You may recall that there was some discussion about this and therefore it was tabled at that time. I have written up, or with, you know, Mallory helped me obviously with the articles, but we have written up the articles where we actually use two commercial trucks as opposed to providing specificity on the trucks, so that way if at town meeting, it seems to be some compromise as to what they are, we will be within the scope of the article and empower the town to do that.
What's that funding amount for? Is it for the ones that Sean was proposing?
Yes.
Because the other ones, you believe to be more expensive actually, right? Although they're smaller trucks?
Potentially. It depends on how you equip them. So the other gentleman, as you know, is Bill Lucini. Bill is proposing a six-wheeler, which in essence should be cheaper than a ten-wheeler, but he wants to be able to equip it with other items on it that potentially brings the price up. So it doesn't mean we need all those options. Bill's real concern is the size of the truck. So we won't know until we go out to bid, but you're right, it certainly could be enough, you feel more comfortable, I mean, I hate to just arbitrarily use a number, but we could always increase that number now.
We can't, at town meeting, we can't increase it, right? We can only decrease.
That is correct.
I personally would like to see us go forward with one of each of the vehicles. I understand the need for the larger vehicle, it can do more hauling, especially when there's call out, but typically that would be one truck called out, not, not more than one. If there is more than one, we wouldn't need the larger vehicle, so I'd like us really to look closely at that and consider buying one of each.
Okay. Yep, I'll, I'll inform them and I will let the Board know that I will be doing a field excursion with a handful, with both Bill, Sean, and Chris, because I want to, I mean, everybody knows what my background is, so I'm, I'm pretty well-versed in vehicles, but I'm not well-versed in six-ton vehicles. And so I want to be able to go out and take a look at these vehicles.
Saturn didn't make one of those?
They did not.
Oh. I'll make a motion that we, I'll entertain a motion that we place this on the warrant, being read by the acting highway superintendent.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay, number two, David?
Yep, so Article two is again on the 9/11 Memorial Park and nine, and so this would be to commit $60,000 in order to create the park, as we've attempted to do at the last couple of, of meetings. However, one thing I do want to ask you, Mallory, were we going to swap Article two and Article three?
I didn't swap it because it's talking about, it's the last sentence, I think. Hold on, let me find this. To be explicit, to create a park, so you can't designate it before creating it. So that's where I went with it. And this is how Jennifer Golden's team sent it over, so I'm just trusting the CPA professionals.
All right, so Article two, the spirit of it is, is to commit up to $60,000 in order to be able to create a 9/11 Memorial Park. Article three is going to ask the town to designate that field area, which is adjacent to the current public safety building, so if you're looking at it to the right, there is a little bit of a hump, there's probably about maybe a quarter of an acre there, and so we're looking to be able to designate that area as a park and therefore create that into the 9/11 Memorial Park as well, as opposed to just hardscaping that itty-bitty little, probably like 15 by 15 area that was directly adjacent to the building.
Okay, and this is, both warrants are being brought by Chris Heinatelli?
That is correct.
Okay. Intertain a motion to place it on the warrant, read by the Parks and, Parks and Forestry Superintendent.
So moved. Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's two and three, down to number four.
So Article four, I believe should be sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. This is in reference, it originally started with the World War I Memorial Plaque, which was in front of this building. The Board then tasked me with making sure that we looked at all the other plaques in town. I know the chairman, Chairman Lawrence, went down, met with Mr. Heinatelli and looked at the other plaques as well at World Memorial Park, and we have now solicited, solicited a bid to do all plaques that are down there and create basically an area that commemorates all of our war-related plaques and other plaques that are down there. So this here, originally we were looking at around 3,000, this increases it to about $12,000. Again, it would be coming from CPC funds.
Is this recommended by the Historic Commission?
It is on their agenda, I believe it's tomorrow, tomorrow, next tomorrow?
They meant tonight.
They mean tonight, okay, so, so it is on their agenda, but according to the chairman, he has noted that he believes that they will be in support of it.
Okay. Eldon, this was brought forward by you, by you, I think would be very fitting for you to present it, and I know it's something you've been working on, so if you don't mind.
It was, it was started by me, when it was out front here, the World War II, and then they got a price on that, and then we took a look at the ones down at the, at the back. They all really need to be done, haven't been done for years. A lot of them, you can't even season names or anything else.
So would you be willing to present that for us?
Yeah, we're willing to present that, yeah.
Intertain a motion to place it on the, on the article, as an article, and to be read by Selectmen Murrera.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
And just, Mr. Chairman, just so you're aware, the packet is also in your folder, you'll sign it as Chair representing the Board, and that packet will go before CPC for their formal review.
Okay. Article five?
Article five is an old bill from the Fire Department that was not paid in fiscal year 17, and therefore they're going to have to pay it out of FY18's budget. In order to do that, it requires a town meeting approval.
What happened with that?
Just didn't get paid.
What's it for?
I honestly don't know. I don't know.
If you could just get Selectmen Kinnahan more information on that, and I'll make a motion that it, I'll entertain a motion that it be placed on the warrant with the fire chief presenting.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number six?
Article six is Biscani, Biscani Lane, just looking for the town, planning board has already recommended to approve it, just looking for the town to now approve it as well, so it can be part of our Chapter 90 funds going forward.
Motion to place on and approve? And that would be the highway superintendent?
Who?
I would, I would actually recommend planning board.
Planning board, you're right, okay. Eldon, move.
Second.
Anthony, second. All those in favor? Aye. Article seven?
So Article seven is being proposed by the town clerk, so I would ask that you recommend that she be the presenter, but basically what this would do is, is that for any petition-driven article at town meeting, is that it would allow her to be able to format it, to make sure that it's legally correct before it goes to town meeting for their review and approval. And just so you're aware, this one here has already been vetted by town council.
Okay, motion to place on with the town clerk presenting?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article eight?
An article eight was a request from this board a couple of meetings ago in reference to the Agricultural Commission. Tracy was a big help, she looked at the statute for us. The concern was, is that the current bylaw says that we have to have seven members, four of which is involved in agricultural, three that has an interest in it. This board in particular, Chairman Lawrence, wanted to see what we could do to minimize that, the seats, so we can make sure we had a quorum and not make the requirement so stringent. So we have attempted to meet that, that mission, so you will see here that what this new warrant article states is that the Board can appoint no less than three, but up to seven members, so therefore if you decide to be a five-member board, three would just be a quorum, and it is less stringent as to what the agricultural restrictions are for a person to be able to serve.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve and place on? I may have a place on and be happy to read that.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Does anyone have any opposition to any of the articles being presented? I know you have some questions on the old bill. Unfortunately, bill's going to be paid either way, but.
I have a question. What about the inclusion matters for the school?
Oh, so in order to set that up, that has to be set up through a revolving account. Turns out that a revolving account can, unless, unless in the special conditions, cannot be done at a special town meeting. So we just received that review today. That has been communicated back to the school, and so they are aware and they are informing the resident as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
You're welcome.
Intertain a motion that we recommend all articles unanimously?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Approve the minutes of September 6th.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Except for a review, I'm sorry, yeah, except for review, September 20th?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aggregation agreement, David?
Sure, so the last time that we met, the Board designated you, Mr. Chairman, to be the liaison. As you know, we met the following day. We had a handful of conference calls, the new bidding came in. National Grid's price for all residents in town for their winter rate was going to be 12.6 cents per kilowatt. After going out to bid, we can aggregate at 11.1 cent, and at the same time, Chairman Lawrence, looking at the, at all of the bids, we were able to get that price and do it 100% using renewable energy as wind as the power source. So, you know, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if you want to speak to it, but it's an opportunity to save money and.
It's just a real win-win. You know, we had a rather long discussion with numerous other communities, and David and I's discussion and negotiation with them was to go with the green energy, which is still a substantial savings. Again, people have the right to opt out. Now I realize everybody gets lots and lots of junk mail soliciting you to change power companies and all this. There will be a piece of mail that's important, it's a, it'll have an index card in there for you to opt out of the program if you wish to just continue buying from whoever you've already selected. If not, you will automatically go onto this program. Again, it's a guaranteed savings from National Grid. National Grid's published their costs for the next six months, I believe.
Correct.
So it is a savings and we did opt to go with the green energy for our community.
Yeah, so like you said, it is a win-win because not only do you save money, all of the power source through National Grid is not necessarily going to be from a green energy source. So for those who are really concerned about the environment, they will be happy, for those who want to save money, they will be happy, for anyone who doesn't care, they'll still be happy. In addition to that, because I want to make sure that people have as much information as possible, is that I've partnered with our consulting group, Colonial Power Group. Next, next Wednesday at 7:00 at the Council on Aging, we are going to have an informational session open to the public. We have already posted on the website and on our social media pages. It will be in the enterprise. We have also sent it over to the Boston Globe for when they do, over the weekend, they do the little, the little cutouts for West Bridgewater. So anybody who would like to be able to attend, we will be able to answer all those questions, and we also running frequently ask questions with their respective answers on our local cable station as well.
Thank you, David. Do we need an official vote?
You do, you do not.
Okay. Site plan review for ComTank?
Yep, so this here is the vendor that has been hired through Shaw's headquarters at 750 West Center Street. They are looking to put a 5,000-gallon tank of diesel fuel that will be used as an alternative power source if they lose power to power their generator. It needs to go through site plan review through the planning board, requiring a special permit because it is in our water district protection zone.
David, is this any type of an indication that Shaw's plans on expanding their operation in town, or is it just a common practice?
Yeah, I don't know, but I, I think it's just they're being proactive, that they want to make sure that if they lose power, that they have an alternative energy source.
Okay, and this has been sent over to the Fire Department, meets their requirements?
The Fire Department's already signed off on it.
Great, thank you. I don't have any concerns to send on.
Nope, so moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Act on Kenneth, Kenneth's vacation carryover?
Yep, so your collective bargaining agreement specifies that if somebody cannot use their vacation time, that they can carry over up to one week, but only with the superintendent's approval in the Board of Selectmen's ratification. So it's for you tonight to be able, if you want to take that vote.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, this is unfortunate, we're receiving the resignation of Jason Daniels from the Cable Advisory Committee. Jason was one of the star members that helped revamp the Cable Advisory Committee. He's done a great job, but we do have a resignation from Jason from that committee. I'll entertain a motion to accept the resignation with our letter of sincere thanks.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
First right of first, right of first refusal, David?
Yep, so this is actual land that's came before you about 16 months ago or so. This is the land behind Hockamark Plaza on North Elm Street. It's about 15 acres, most of which is wet. At that time, it was in 61A land. It was sold, but it never came out of its designation. The new owners have now reached in agreement with a new purchaser and have basically flipped the property. For all of those who would like to know, they've made $400,000, so not a bad investment. And so we have first right of refusal on it again. We chose not to exercise it last time. I presume it will be the same answer this time. It has already gone before the Board of Assessors, the Planning Board, and the Conservation Commission, all of whom who have advised us not to exercise our first right of refusal.
I have a motion to pass the right of first refusal?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
David, I know there's certain requirements. Has the time ran out from the last time we voted, or does it still have to wait so many days before their transaction?
Yep, so it's 120 days from notice. I've put it on the first meeting, so I can send that out within the next week and they'll receive it.
Okay, because we, all the boards have voted then, so we're not.
That is correct.
Okay, very good, thank you. Just don't want to hold it up. Board of Selectmen appointment policy?
So you've already approved this. Last meeting, you asked us to make some amendments to it. Basically, what your concern was that you ought to make sure that it wasn't just an individual non-resident, but also a property owner in town. So we've amended the language. I presented it to the Board to make sure that it states what you were hoping for it to state, and if so, no vote is required, you'll just have to vote on it. If there is a change that you need to make, just let me know and we'll make that change. But I think we captured what you were looking for.
Yep. I have no issues. Why don't we just go ahead and ratify that with a vote to accept as amended?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved Bobcat hourly rate. David's asked that we suspend this till we can do a little further investigation, so that'll be back on the agenda at our next meeting. This is pertaining to contractors and snow removal. Energy Efficiency Day, David?
Yep, actually with Selectmen Kinnahan, who asked me to put, place this on the agenda.
I got a notification from a resident that tomorrow is Energy Efficiency Day. If you go to energyefficiencyday.org, there's some tips on how to save energy and money, some tips on lighting fixtures, HVAC maintenance, insulation. Mallory's also posted some information online.
Right.
That's all.
Thank you. Moving on, communication reports from Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Town Officials. I don't think we have any. Correspondence from the public to determine a course of action? We have none. Public comment period? I would like to remind everyone that October is officially Breast Cancer Awareness Month. This Board's celebrated for the last number of years. You may notice town halls lit up pink, and town employees are all encouraged to wear pink on Fridays through the cooperation of Texas Roadhouse. All employees that wear pink, I saw Tracy's email, has gone out to all employees, if you wear pink, you'll get entered into a drawing at the end of the month. Two winners will win a $30 gift certificate to the Texas Roadhouse. Thank you to them and thanks for everyone that's going to participate, and I think that's exciting. This is our, I think, sixth or seventh year we've been doing this, so this is wonderful. Anyone else have anything else to add? Okay. Town administrators report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I placed on the agenda for you in reference to former Officer Dan Desmond, as you all know, in December of 2013. We placed Officer Desmond on paid administrative leave. This Board then terminated him for just cause in early February of that year. It's been three-plus years that it has winded through its court systems, through the court system, at four different levels. Your decision has been up to, has been upheld. Unfortunately, there is a fifth appeal available, if that's what he would choose us to exercise, but I thought that it was important for this Board to know that we have one again at the appellate level, and then it was important for the public to be aware of it as well. That's why I placed it on the agenda.
When's the deadline for appeal?
It's, I believe it's October 20th.
Thank you.
Next is the Fire Chief Screening Committee. Last time we met, you placed Assistant Town Administrator Mallory Ehrenstein on the Subcommittee, and you also placed the Police Chief Vic Flaherty on the Subcommittee as well, on the Screening Committee. You asked me to place one person on it. I chose John Delano as the Conservation Agent. I did that because one thing that people are not aware of is that one of the chief responsibilities of a fire chief is a regulatory person, where he makes sure that people have their fire alarms, businesses are in accordance with code requirements. So I thought that it was important to have somebody in town that has regulatory experience and enforcement powers experience. So Mr. Delano has accepted the position. They will, we have already posted for the job. In concert with Selectmen Kinnahan, we came up with a couple of requirements, which was a minimum of 15 years of experience, along with deputy chief or equivalent, because we want to make sure they're managing a department, that they already have plenty of administrative and managerial experience. We have placed it on MMA.org, which is the primary place to place an ad for a job of this nature. It's also on the website and posted around town as well.
David, how long do people have to apply? What's the timeline?
I think it's, I think it's October 20th as well.
October 20th? Okay, so all applications will be presented to that committee that will screen those applications?
That's correct.
That the, any that don't meet the requirements will be ruled out from that, at that level, then passed on to you?
That is correct.
For screening. You may or may not do pre-interviews and then pass on the finalists to the Board to be interviewed.
That's correct, so the top three candidates will come before you, and then you will make that selection at that point. The intent is, is to do it at your second meeting, which I believe is November 15th, and we have posted that since the current chief's last day of work is at the end of December, we'd like to make sure that that person is available and ready for January 1st, January 2nd.
Okay, and that would, that would, they would rather be onboard by then, in training, or would they just start that day?
If, it would be ideal if we could have a transition period.
Right, okay, thank you.
In the last items in reference to net school spending, this is a requirement by state law that, as Town Administrator, I notify the School Committee, who then notifies the State Department of Education, as to how much we actually spend in reference to education, because what we spend is not just what you see on the school budget that goes before the Finance Committee. For example, we also pay the insurances, we also pay health insurance, and there's a lot of administrative tasks that we do here at the town that are associated with the town, with the school.